And you're all set. Have a good meeting whenever you're ready, Mr. X.
Yeah, peace out, Brianna. Do we have to equip anything?
I don't know. No, it's okay.
There we go. Yeah. All right, we are following the order. The October nineteenth point three meeting of the Citro zoning board appeals. The Citro zoning board appeals is committed to providing an environment of respect. During meetings, we have all members to interact in a polite manner, even when there are disagreements. We value the participation of our community and while all participants, including marginalized and minority class communities feel welcome and respected, we ask our committee members and all to participate, to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. Know that this meeting is being held both in person and via Zoom. The meeting, in being important, we view on Citro Community Television and Facebook Live, the reported meeting will be available following date on contact channel lines and on Citro Community Television. We have one and only one me, uh, application to hear today. The applications for, uh, two oh eight, Chief Justice Pushing Way has, uh, has had a request for continuance, but we will not be hearing that. And our third application on three thirty Janet Road has been withdrawn. So I say that for the benefit of the people in the room, in case somebody's here for any one of those other two applications. All right, with that, we will be hearing the first application of Joan D C Di Natale of three forty nine Haveli Road, Citro, Mass, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with N T L Chapter forty eight, Section six, and Section four thirty point two of the Citro zoning bylaw and or any other relief that the board would be able to grant to allow the expansion of the operation of a current vet and breakfast establishment to more than two guest bedrooms located at three forty nine Haveli Road. Uh, and on that application, we have the applicant here. Please come to name address for the record.
Joanne Di Natale, three forty nine Haveli Road, in Chur.
All right, Ms. Di Natale, can you tell us what are you seeking to accomplish for us a little bit about property? Tell us then what's going on here.
So I applied for a, uh, two bedroom vet and breakfast, um, over the summer. And I've had, I've had several inquiries from local friends and, and acquaintances with regard to upcoming weddings in the area through the Barker Tavern, Citro Yocwa, and they were looking for places to stay where we had limited availability always at the end. It seemed to be booked in the summer. So my thought was, you know, wouldn't it be nice to host families that were coming into town where they all know each other? I have the room and I thought it would be nice to, you know, allow families from out of town to be able to come and stay and enjoy Citro in a home environment rather than necessarily a hotel.
So let me understand, you said over the summer, you applied for a two bedroom vet and breakfast?
Yes, I was approved for a two bedroom vet and breakfast, um, which I did over the summer.
So you went to the building department?
Yes, I did. I went before the board selectment.
Before the board's select?
Yes, yes. I was granted a permit or?
There was some license pending.
Or license, yes, yeah.
So you have a business license? That could be important.
Actually, I've got it.
Right, okay. Uh, so you're approved to run a vet and breakfast?
Correct, yes.
Right, so that's step one, directly. Um, and as it was originally approved, it was for two bedrooms. You're looking to expand it to how many bedrooms do you?
Total four. So I, I have an additional two bedrooms that are not used as part of vet and breakfast, and I'm looking to allow those two to be used in the event that I get inquiries, which I have been getting inquiries regarding more bedrooms, but I've only been able to limit, obviously, to the two that I can permit.
So, so that makes, I think I understand that, that part. How many bedrooms is the house currently?
Five.
And you've gone to list on the present?
I do.
So that part makes sense. So we have a plot plan, uh, with us here, and we were trying to kind of eat company what was going on. There's a lot fifty and a lot fifty one.
Yes, so back in, I'm sure, I'm not sure, was it two thousand thirteen? So two thousand thirteen, we had subdivided our lot and we sold to the Campbells. So there's, I believe their lot is fifty fifty one, I'm fifty, and they are fifty one.
So they are sixty, lot fifty one, if it was subdivided. All right, so we are, your lot?
My lot fifty.
Lot fifty, so you are thirty three thousand six hundred and seventy nine square foot lot.
Correct.
Interesting. Um, is there anything, again, it was a little bit confusing, right? And there was proposed relocation of a shed on this.
This?
I understand it's an older plan. Um, is, was that done?
So, yeah, so originally with the, the front to back, as you see from Haveli, back to the last fifty and fifty one were always considered, I believe, each were a lot. It just had not been subdivided via an entry, you know, I think because we owned the whole thing. We owned, we actually owned fifty, fifty one, then it's to the right of that was a whole other lot that not taking that into account. So originally, it was an existing shed that was, you could see it on lot fifty one, that was part of my property that when the Campbells purchased it, we moved that to lot fifty.
So there's, so part of my inquiry here is, as part of this, you're not seeking any new construction? I'm just, I want to be due for clear, that's all, right? All you're looking to do is expand the current use.
Correct, yes.
Perfect. Is, is the home, is the, is the dwelling being used with any other purpose in addition to your residence? That's what you've told us. And as a vet and breakfast?
I use my studio on occasion. I own a, um, a salon in Norwell.
Yeah.
And, um, so after COVID, I had several clients that, um, were somewhat immune compromised. They felt more comfortable in a one-on-one, um, place. My daughter is a licensed esthetician, and so during her schooling, I purchased her a bed, and she used it for practice. So it came in handy after COVID with, you know, just people's ends of going into a salon environment. So, um, one to two days a week, that takes the whole of my clients in the studio there.
Okay, for?
I just do eyelash extensions.
Eyelash. Uh, and that's done in, uh, open space. It's not done in one of these bedrooms?
No, 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 it's a separate, so the, the shed that worked, the shed that was?
Well, I'm looking at the, the picture.
So that little where your thumb is, is a, is a separate?
Right.
Structure.
So that, that's the relocated shed?
Yes.
Okay.
It's probably one eight hundred sixty.
Right, basically, that's the relocated shed is referred to in the original plan. Yeah, I don't have the right, I have what I have.
So I think the confusion is there's two. So I had that structure that was moved, and I also have a smaller little shed that was also on lot fifty originally. It just needed to be moved from being parallel to Haveli more, and now it's horizontal.
Wow, this plan, that's what.
Like a woodshed, so it's very.
Okay, I just wanted to get that sort of up front, so that we understand how everything are, what's, what's going on, what the ask is, if you will. Um, am I just adding the application? Correct.
Uh, yes, I think so.
Anything that you think we need to know before I turn it over to the board? And obviously, there's folks here that we want to something to say about it. But, um, I would, okay, at this point, okay. Board members, questions of the athlete? And then I'll, I'll turn it over. I don't see any, I don't see a lot of people online, so I think this is our universal people we're gonna ask. Please. Uh, your property card, public record?
Yes.
Shows that it's a four bedroom house, Japan, to die.
That's incorrect. I have, uh, I believe I have, I saw one that had five. It's always been five.
Town website has listed us four and this incident for, I believe those are both the official records. This is fiscal year twenty twenty three, listed us four bedrooms.
From my knowledge, it, it was an addition in the nineteen forties for a minute's quarter. So, uh, I don't know anything about any, I've never done any addition to your home. I've done interior work, but there's never been any additional bedrooms or rooms added or no. And I've owned the property since two thousand and one.
Are you, just, just, just as a start?
Yeah.
Do you know the significance of that house?
Um, I don't, I don't run there.
It's one of like, it's one of the better worlds.
Well, I know that, yeah, I do know that. I, which is neat.
It's one of like trees.
It's, from what I've learned is that it was built in nineteen twenty five, and it was royal, one of his first homes that he built.
Yeah. Uh, but I moved that.
As a summer. And.
Uh, so you listed as four bedrooms.
On the card.
So we listen.
So is that something I have to have changed? Do you, is that some?
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure Mr. De Vino, what he says is all, he'll be interested.
And it raises a, it raises a sort of another related issue. Are, are you currently? Are you currently on septic?
No.
You're on counter? As of right now, okay. All right, so that doesn't have that problem. If it's approved, the septic's approved. Four, five, it makes a difference, right?
It's a sure.
Yeah, right, exactly. But she's, she's on counter, so that, that. When you applied on the selectment, did you apply for only those two rooms, or did you apply for approval of quantity of rooms and they settle onto?
No, I only applied for the two.
Just those two. All right, other than the field card and statement, how we can hone this, take a little bit of their plan. Other questions here? I mean, I'm not saying it's not that important. That's, that's a very important issue.
What was that? The salon, the use of the salon in our R two district?
This is, it's not a salon. I, I, I think there's just a, yeah, it's.
Well, Chinese is eight, eight rooms to do.
Use the shed.
I use it, yeah. I think that's.
That's about right, yes.
Yeah, it's not a salon. I think that was a poor choice of words, but someone who doesn't know, you know. It's not a salon.
You applied and weren't gonna be, no, you were. Okay, so we have by rights use. We have a little bit of discrepancy.
In eyelash installation facility.
Exactly, yeah, exactly. That's more like.
Yeah. Okay, um, what else here? All right, things, yeah, see. Okay, we will take, we've had written commentary by one person in the public. And I can summarize that there, uh, generally, my summary, and again, this will be part of the general record. It will be available in files, was that running a larger vet and breakfast in this area, if not in keeping with the spirit of the R two zoning district. That's just a summary of what that was. They are generally opposed to this. That being said, just so that we have sort of a complete record, folks from the public that would want to comment, please raise your hands, come up. So thank you for now, uh, yeah, just if you can take a step back, so we can let other people come up, and then we'll call you, still call you back. Members of the public or public agencies, either way. Yes, sir. You've come up. Please name and address for the record.
Yeah, I'm here. I am Joe Campbell, and I live at fifteen Hood Road, which is.
Right next door.
Lot fifty one. So I just found it.
Mr. Campbell, your thoughts on this? You're in a butter?
I am. I don't know enough about B and Bs. How many B and Bs are there in Citro?
Uh, do you have a feel for that? I don't want the answer.
I'd say this might be the only establishment that fits that specific criterion.
Right.
At the moment. There have been others. I do not think there are any operating.
Currently adds a B and B.
If that, yes.
So we have three definitions. Hotel has to have camera. Right? A B and B or inn is usually two or more bedrooms. And you need a special permit for anything over two bedrooms. The difference between a B and B and an inn is whether you share breakfast and there is a dining room. B and B, someone makes you breakfast, it does not have to be a dining room. An inn, uh, to summarize, there'd be a dining room, you'd serve in the dining, right? Again, they'd be under ten bedrooms and rooms for rent. And as far as zoning for those, are they? They are allowed, so I think I can get to your, they are allowed in, in fact, the R one, R two, or R three district, but they all require the, a B and B or an inn would require a special permit. A hotel has further restrictions about where it would be. So we have a couple of concerns. Sure. Those are public safety. How are these people vetted who are? I have three and five-year-old grandchildren. I come over four or five times a week. The thought of having different wedding party over there every weekend is a little scary. I work quite a bit, and my wife's home alone a lot. So that's further concern. And I've been doing weddings, working weddings in this area for the past thirty six years. Which is why. And I, I get it. I mean, there is definitely a hotel room shortage. There is a, you know, sure. Cohasset Harbor Inn went down, that was fifty five rooms.
Right.
I used to run awful hotel. The, the one I work at now, I'm a tenant in the Fantastic Beach Resort. And they're full all the time.
Yep.
Like, it's, it's Thursday, we're full.
Right.
So there's a definite need for more. I just don't want it in my side. It's really not simple. Um, for those reasons, just, I think wedding groups can tend to be a little rowdy at times. And, um, it's, it's my personal experience that I pick people out of hotels many times. I don't think anybody here would want that. Yeah, it's, uh, right, that's, that's what we're here to kind of determine, right?
And also just the precedent of it.
Well, yeah, I mean, it is allowed, but again, we have this process. And, and again, and it's the impact of something like that to the neighborhood specifically, um, is, is kind of what we're trying to make a determination on, whether the benefits outweigh, you know.
Yeah, we were very attracted to the neighborhood when we drove by. We drove by on a Sunday afternoon, and no signs were, and we just said, wow, this is great spot, what road is this? Then we get to the end, it's Hood Road. Next day, I go to a house in Hangum. It was listed on Craigslist. I said, do you listen to your house on Craigslist? So I went on Craigslist. I found they're posting for Lanferston. So I said, where is it? Well, it's behind whatever.
Yeah.
Same place, like we had just been there the day before it was meant to be. And we like it because there's, they sold five houses on Hood Road. The church at the time was vacant for twelve years, and it's quiet. You know, it's just the Patrick's Row across the street, and their daughter was next to her, and young family in the new house down at the end, and the weeds were next to us. That's it. Nobody else was there. So it would be a big change for our neighborhood. I don't know where all the cars are gonna go, if there's multiple. I mean, four bedrooms can be more than four people.
Thank you.
Yes.
No, I mean, our, thank you.
I said, those are, are two concerns. Public safety and quiet enjoyment.
Sure. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Patricia Lambert. I'm the chair of the planning board, so I'm here in both capacities, like fourteen hours in place. I'm here unofficially, as you know, the planning board. We've had a wide discussion about this in house. So I guess the first question is, there are two definitions for a vet and breakfast under the state national laws. And one is as a home and one is as an establishment. So I need to ask you what you got your application for, what this is like for.
I'm sorry.
An establishment or a home, there are two different definitions. They're very different on.
I believe it's a home.
So right there, that only allows two bedrooms. So that's one of the things that I think we need to talk, and we talked about in-house about parking. So that's a huge issue. So if you want to work at this, you know, it's two parking spaces, blah, blah, blah. Um, and we are very concerned about the discrepancy about the amount of bedrooms, between the four or five. We just had a massive reevaluation and reassessment of the power, so I would assume that they would have gone in to see that. And all the cards have been updated, right? Or, or probably cards have been updated. Right, so it's still assessed for bedrooms, so I think that that's another issue that, even though it's on Seward, it's still just.
Well, yeah, there, there's a discrepancy, right?
Yeah. But I guess the issue that, that I have actually is it's a home.
Excuse me, that just shows that it, I guess it's as an in holder. I wasn't sure if it was a, how it was listed.
He doesn't, he doesn't.
It doesn't, yeah.
And. Look at right there, hold on. This is the other one that came with the, with Frankel.
Well, yeah, the company Victoria's license is there, we can serve food, so I guess that's, you can have that one back. Means, of course, I have both of these back, but.
So, 'cause the other question, the agent, you're describing for knowing that there were two differences. That's the other issue, obviously. I, and, and although we do this in our, in our actual, in our own zone, let it be known that we get complaint and complaint be complaint, which we can do nothing above because we don't have a bylaw yet about the B and Bs, which while it's different that a vet and breakfast, I don't know, of course, you may be registered as a, well, you can be a B and B at vet and breakfast. But if you, we have massive complaints about that, as I'm sure you're well aware of. I am trying, just for the experience, and any of it can be brought up, but I'm getting on with it.
Yeah, so that gives her an in holder's license. So she is allowed to operate a B and B or an inn. Again, the difference sort of being whether she lives there and how she operates fully under our bylaws. Yeah.
Okay. So those are why we.
No, no, yeah, well, I'm trying to think if I have any.
Yeah.
And this is. You can have that, yeah. You have that, that. Much, thank you for bringing that. I appreciate it. Um, yeah, I mean, I think the, the process is pretty clear as far as expansion from under fewer, fewer bedrooms to more than that, right? That, and it's clear in our code that there is a process for that, and that is a special permit. So, um, and, you know, she has the right to operate a business, and she has the right to operate a business for up to two bedrooms. Uh, that's, I think, you know, she was granted a license, and I think she can do that with that license. That's my opinion, as of, sort of as of right, she does not do something current. Or two bedrooms, or two bedrooms, that's what I, yeah, absolutely. Um, and that's, that's the question. So, uh, the question is, again, expansion. We have a, a bit of a disconnect, because an expansion to four bedrooms, which is the request, would be impossible by what we have in front of us, because the field card says four. Right, so if she couldn't live there and expand, right? It wouldn't be an inn. It would be a separate hotel where the person's not living there. Right, and then I'm sure she wouldn't be an inn. It, it still couldn't, wouldn't be an inn because she, well, right, it would be, but she, she would not be living there forever. Right, um, and if, if she's living there, and there's a discrepancy, right, it doesn't, we don't know how many bedrooms this is authorized for. So that's, I think, one discrepancy. I think, um, the question about parking is, I think, a good question that we're gonna ask in a minute. Obviously, there are other commentary, comments about that. And I think we all appreciate the comments about sort of generally operating that type of establishment in a residential neighborhood, right, which is where you would operate a B and B. You know, and the usual concerns, right? Noise, safety, etc. And I think those are, those are the usual concerns that neighbors would have, so you might really appreciate that. Are there any other questions or comments at this point? Certainly, please come up with comments. Name and address for the record.
Yeah, Peter Miller, three, five, three, Haveli Road.
Butter, excellent.
Yeah, lived right across the street, so we almost share driveways. I have four children, teenagers. We back into her driveway. So I think if there's parking issues slash car, I'm gonna be as effective as anyone. What I would say is, I fully support Jody. Um, I know and I respect everyone's opinion. This is not a hotel. This is not a rental. I'll, I'll just give you an example. Across from us on Stony Ave, and behind us, there are apartments for rent that our neighbors have. I don't know who vets those people. Those people are left alone in those, in those homes and apartments without anyone paying attention. Jody's an unbelievable neighbor. I think it is. Gets out of control, she'll do the right thing. I don't, she's gonna live there. I don't think she wants to be on, or unsafe, or have people that are gonna be doing things that are, you know, things I wouldn't want to. So I trust Jody. And although I respect, everyone has the right to their opinion, she's not throwing a wedding on her property. She's going to vet people based on who she thinks fits the criteria to share her home with her. And I, my wife and I, and our children love her, and we love the neighborhood, but our neighborhood is a busy neighborhood. Hood Road is extremely active. Cars constantly coming off Haveli Road in the back. I mean, it is a busy intersection, if you will. People turning right and left, coming down, and speed along those roads, so Jody having cars or whatever, it's gonna, it's not like it's this quiet little dainty neighborhood that no one ever drives down. And the church at the end of the street now is fully operational. And they host major events typically on Sundays, but in the summer. And we've never had this, but the kids are, and people are walking all the time from the church on a hot summer day. They're walking to the beach right in front of our home, constantly. So I just think that if she's willing to post COVID, she's figured out a way to make some extra income, she's willing to take on the risk, she's gonna live in the home. She's not looking to rent it out like a hotel every night. It's gonna be on a case-by-case basis. I support her.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Yes, we, we love to hear from everybody in the committee with.
And I respect everyone else's opinion, but I think if we're gonna go down that road, then we need to address all the renters. Who's renting to who? How are they vetted? What about apartments? Who's in those apartments? What are those people doing in their homes? Because we're opening up a can of worms. This is not, those people are living there for a year, six months to a year. These people are living here for a night. And she's living on property. Those renters, you know, aren't home or turning their homes over and leaving. And then it's up to the neighbors to deal with. And I'm not saying they're issues, because they're not. I'm just saying, it's not like there aren't situations in the community where people are renting properties currently. This isn't a bunch of single-family homes with a kindergarten and no. This isn't a bunch of single family homes with a kindergarten and no one drives down the street.
Your point is those are safe situations, why can't this?
Yeah, correct. Correct, or we just get in a position where we don't allow rentals. Or bed and breakfasts, or ins. And people can't run their businesses out of their home. And I think if that's the direction we wanna go in the press that I said, then I support that. Whatever's good for the community, but I don't think you can have some people get it some way and other people get it the other way.
Very.
Also.
Uh, other commentary?
I basically second what Pete said, just because.
I'm sorry, name and address for the record?
It's Jill Descham, and I'm at twenty more to cut Lincoln.
Thank you.
Sure. The church was my first thought, just that we grew up going to Saint Francis, it shifted, was empty for a while, and now is unbelievably busy. So in other words, I just found that an important comment about there are a lot of people company going right at the end of that particular. I don't find in the neighborhood really is a street with a couple of houses, but. Um, so just in support of Jody, Jody's my sister. Anyways, just in support, it's pretty much what Pete said, those were my exact thoughts and he just really kind of underscored them. I think Jody would go. She, she's a, a woman living alone too. I mean, my concern as a sister was that. You know, how are you going to vet these people or whatever? We're going through the process to make sure she would never wanna put herself in harm's way. Most of the people in her experience with the first run through of the two bedrooms this summer, she knew the people, it's mostly through people that she knows. There's a comfort level with that. These are family members of residents and they've lived in Citro for decades, so. Point being, Jody would really make sure that these were decent human beings that are gonna be sharing quarters with her. And they're gone most of the time, they come and sleep there. This is not conducive in her house. They come sit, have coffee, and then they're off. Most of these people have other things they're doing, so they're not partying on premises. This is not strictly just for weddings, it could be someone sightseeing or, you know, being patrons at all our wonderful places within Citro. So anyways, it was more just also about the fact that it's not just weddings, that happened to be something that was an inquiry. That Jody said, gee, I would love to be able to, a bride came to her that lives in the South Shores, I'd love to have my family members take, can you do four bedrooms? So that's what prompted, I think, the expansion, yeah. So, thank you.
Any other questions?
Please, sort of, repeat your question. So this would be a special permit?
Yeah.
Fifty point three is the, well, can you give me the satisfying conditions in? The six sort of criteria here. Right, that's the, that's the test for a lot of.
Should it? That's right. That's, yeah. Any special permit, right? So, yeah, because it's not, uh, uh, it would be the general provisions, I just didn't give them three or four. But, uh. It's this, it's not a setback issue, right? This is just a general special permit. Uh, part one. I mean, we can, we can. Add conditions, right, uh, under ninety point four, for example. Yeah, fifty packs. So. Where I'm having, and I, and I think here's the disconnect. And it's not a disconnect with whatever everyone in fact here has said. Bob, did, did my wonderful colleague here? Read the field card, right? Is this listed as a four bedroom?
Same field card that I read, and it is.
And it's listed as a four bedroom, wow, so this, which makes. So I, I don't think. Here, cause, I don't think we can approve this as the application was made, because you asked this to be a four bedroom B and B, which means it has to have five bedrooms. That you're living at, which I think is correct and appropriate and consistent. It can't, the math doesn't work, the arithmetic doesn't work.
Is there, is there a hope for a correction for the town to make sure, because there's clearly five bedrooms in that, so in other words, it's like a matter of correcting the assessor's office?
Yeah, I think.
Is there a sign, there must be a problem with?
Yeah, well, or we have.
Yeah.
That, that's exactly what we have to do, is have the assessor come back in, make a determination this is a five bedroom house, right? Now you're on sewer, so the septic issue isn't going to be an issue, right? Um, and then effectively come back. Right before us and say, okay. Same conversation we had, it's a five bedroom house, it's been reassessed appropriately. We wanna expand to the format or reapply, if it's determined, for example, that it's not bad. Um, then, then correct the application in a way where, uh, you know, you're asking for three bedrooms instead of four.
I.
Of course, go ahead.
Big procedure, keep you here with us, continuance.
I, I would, I would be okay with this as a continuance and a, because the underlying request is the same.
Right.
Right, uh, as a continuance with additional documents, right, which we do all the time, right, people come in and they update. You see any problem, Bob, with us doing it that way as a continuance? I, I don't think there's any reason we take this off.
Right.
And have it go through the whole filing process again, says another pity, I, I would, uh, but I can't, I, this is me and I'm happy to turn it off.
It's, it's the crux of the map.
It's the crux, yeah.
Bed and breakfast, you're building out the, the hall, those on the block, it's all four bedrooms.
You gotta have enough, you gotta, you have to have five bedrooms, right, right, and, and again, it's not an issue.
So I just had a quick question, um, so prior to being on town, I think we went on town in two thousand and thirteen or in that general vicinity.
Sure.
I was on, I did have a septic, and the septic was approved for a five bedroom, so there has to be documentation somewhere.
Somewhere, somewhere.
The easiest thing to do is to figure out, yeah.
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 Because, because I, I can have, I can make my, well, I can't, so the way my stuff. But you can, you can get your septic approved for however many bedrooms you want, right? You just build a bigger septic.
Oh, that's not base, so it's not, so, okay, so.
It's approved for a four bedroom, you would have two bedrooms.
Right, I see, I see, okay, I just thought maybe there was a typo somewhere.
No, 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 probably had, somebody came in and, you know, they built a five bedroom septic, which is probably like that. But it, it's listed as a four bedroom, so the easiest is to go to the assessor's office, have that conversation, get it reassessed. Somebody walks through, say, yes, there are five bedrooms, this looks kosher. Um, and, and then, but, uh, I think, uh, if you're willing, we can continue this. I don't know if we're able to do it for next month, it might be the month after. Um, but, uh, uh, we can continue this and if you can come back, sort of reapply, uh, you know, I'm sorry, supplement the application on this paper. Uh, and then we can have a follow up discussion then, um, I think, because I don't think we can even. It's just the disconnect, I don't think we can even consider it. Can't consider the request. Does that?
First.
There, yeah, that's, are we, all right.
Elizabeth, what do we look like next month?
So far, three.
We already continue one.
Just three next month, and I'm gonna.
With a continuance, there's one continuance from this month.
One continuance and then two new.
Okay.
So this would be four, and I'm gonna close tomorrow, so if you did it.
So, so we could do it today, right?
We could do it, if the tax assessor could get out and do it before then, so I could certainly put her in and then if we have to. Continue again.
Yeah, we think the doctor will catch up.
All right, yeah, the doctor's to catch up, okay. So, uh, I will make a motion that we continue this till the next schedule here, is that on a favor? Okay, so we're gonna continue that, folks, okay? We will see you.
I guess I have one more question.
Uh, I won't close, go ahead, absolutely, if. If it's sold. Does somebody then own a B and B? Or is the license, that's what, the license is personal. My thing, I might understand it.
License.
It's with the business, the business is personal, right, that, or what she has, it's like she's equipped to run a business. Okay, um, and she would have to go back and get a dis- like for that. But, but, because it is, uh, it is a home in an R two zoning district, right? It is not a commercial building. In a commercial, right, and, and again, in a commercial building, commercial, listen, you sell the building, you don't necessarily sell the business, right? All right. Awesome, we have some business, so we have some, uh, we, are she been approved?
We do.
Uh, oh, that's probably right, so we, I will also move officially to continue. The application of two oh eight here, so it's a freaking highlight till next month. All in favor?
I, okay.
That's, can you? Um, and then we have what meeting minutes?
Those got to do it.
August meeting minutes.
I hope that, I hope that.
All right, I move, I move this to the February eight minutes, on favor? I make a move and then we blow it out.
Chris, do you have a question about the, uh?
Uh, I close out, uh, there's, uh. Yes, on favor?
No, I can.
I, I.